All right, welcome to the December 18th, 2024 Meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call. Commissioner Aparna.
Present.
Commissioner Coleman.
Present.
Commissioner Copely.
Present.
Commissioner Gagne.
Present.
Commissioner Van Nyman.
Present.
Vice Chair Woodier.
Present.
And I am Chair Weston. I'd like to thank the following staff for being present tonight. Jeff Churchill, Glenn Coyle, Ian Lefcourt, and Chris Wyatt. I would, before we get to the agenda, I would like to amend a typo in the proposed agenda. So in item four, we will have hearings on the 2025 code package for first zones and uses, and then a second hearing for incentives and requirements. With that, I look for a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's approved. Next, it's time for us to hear public comment and items from the audience. This is for topics that aren't addressed by our two public hearings later tonight.
Okay, we have one in-person speaker signed up, Dr. Morton.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm David Morton, Redmond 98053. It's critically important that the Planning Commission recommend the adoption of robust development regulations that protect Redmond's critical areas as required by the Growth Management Act. As Redmond continues to grow, development practices should safeguard the vital ecological systems that make Redmond livable and sustainable. The five types of critical areas that must be protected are defined by the RCW as wetlands, aquifer recharge areas, frequently flooded areas, geologically hazardous areas, and fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. Each plays an irreplaceable role in maintaining environmental health and public safety. Once these critical areas are compromised, restoration is often prohibitively expensive or simply impossible. Wetlands act as natural water filtration systems and provide essential habitat for diverse species. Aquifer recharge areas ensure a sustainable supply of clean drinking water. Protecting frequently flooded areas and geologically hazardous zones is crucial for public safety and reduces the city's exposure to natural disasters. Of particular importance is the protection of anadromous fish species, especially our salmon populations. These species are crucial to our ecosystem and are deeply woven into our cultural fabric and economic well-being. The decline in salmon populations throughout the Pacific Northwest is a stark reminder of what we stand to lose without proper protections. I strongly urge the Planning Commission to recommend development regulations that incorporate the best available science and establish clear enforceable standards for critical area protection. These regulations should include robust buffer requirements, strict mitigation standards, and regular monitoring protocols. They should also account for climate change impacts and future development pressures. Also, I recommend including provisions for public education and engagement, as community understanding and support are essential for successful implementation. Consider establishing a citizen advisory committee to help monitor and evaluate the effectiveness of these protections over time. By taking strong action now to protect our critical areas, you invest in Redmond's long-term environmental and economic health. You also fulfill your obligation to future generations who deserve to inherit a city with healthy ecosystems, clean water, and thriving wildlife populations. I trust that the Planning Commission will make recommendations that reflect the seriousness of this responsibility and the irreplaceable nature of Redmond's critical areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is it. There's been some written comments submitted, which will be in your email.
Great, thank you. All right, so with that, we will move to the public hearing on the 2025 code package for Redmond 2050. The first hearing is zones and uses, and for that, I'm going to bring up Ian Lefcourt. Is that correct?
There is not a staff presentation to precede the public hearing because this is a hearing that's been open for some time, so we can...
So we'll just run it? Okay, great.
And we have one speaker signed up for the zones and uses public hearing, Dr. Morton.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm David Morton, Redmond 98053. I'd like to comment on the 2025 code package, Part One, concerning zones and uses. The Planning Commission has given thoughtful consideration to balancing development with sustainability and community needs. Three key areas could be strengthened. First, zoning clarity. Distinctions between mixed-use zones should remain clear, particularly between urban mixed-use and corridor mixed-use. Property owners have expressed concerns about height limits and commercial space preservation. Raising the base maximum building height from 60 to 65 feet in mixed-use zones can improve economic feasibility while maintaining architectural standards. Specifying clear definitions and design guidelines for ground-floor commercial spaces will promote vibrant, walkable communities. The design review processes ought to ensure architectural variety and aesthetic consistency. Second, community input involving outreach workshops and direct mail campaigns has clearly influenced key revisions. Going forward, periodic reviews and feedback loops can ensure continuous community involvement. Consider establishing a formal advisory committee comprising residents, business owners, and environmental advocates to provide ongoing input. Additional community forums and online engagement platforms could enable more residents to share insights and concerns on future zoning updates. Third, environmental protections. The protection of Redmond's natural resources, particularly its critical aquifer recharge areas, is essential. I support the inclusion of limitations on uses in these sensitive areas as outlined in the issues matrix. Explicitly labeling restricted uses in zoning tables will strengthen these protections. Future revisions should consider how environmental sustainability can be integrated more comprehensively into zoning incentives, such as density bonuses for green building certifications or energy-efficient designs. Sustainability metrics like stormwater management standards and carbon reduction targets will align future developments with climate resilience goals. Promoting native landscaping and habitat restoration in urban areas can further advance ecological health. These enhancements can help Redmond grow responsibly while preserving its unique character and environmental integrity. Ensuring that development frameworks remain transparent, inclusive, and environmentally conscious will support a thriving, sustainable community for current and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so with that, no additional speakers?
Not on the zones and uses public hearing.
Okay, so in that case, I will close the verbal portion of this hearing and leave open the written portion of the public hearing. And then our second hearing is the requirements and incentives in the 2025 code package for Redmond 2050, and I will open this public hearing.
And we have two speakers signed up for the requirements and incentives.
There is a staff presentation for this one.
Wonderful. Who should I introduce?
I will take care of it.
Thank you. So with Jeff Churchill.
All right, thank you very much. The purpose of the presentation here is just to recap the components of the requirements and incentives package, because you've seen pieces of it from meeting to meeting, but we haven't kind of reviewed everything that is in it all together in a little bit. So there are three main components. There are, there is the downtown center plan update, there are zoning map changes, and then there are code updates, which themselves have several pieces. So first, the downtown center plan. We haven't spent a lot of time talking about it, but we introduced it in November, I think. And what it is, is similar to the Overlake Plan addendum that you reviewed last year. This is a compilation of the policies and narrative that are needed for the downtown center to be recertified by the Puget Sound Regional Council in 2025. So it doesn't cover any new ground. It takes information from the comprehensive plan and that is downtown-specific and required for recertification and packages it in a plan or a report of sorts for the Planning Commission, for City Council, and for the Puget Sound Regional Council. So that is what that is about. The elements on this slide describe the topics that are inside the downtown center plan, and you'll see as you read through the plan that this comes from Redmond 2050. A lot of it comes from the community development and design element, but there are portions from other elements as well. Zoning map changes is the second piece of this. There are two things going on here. One is consolidation of zones, like finishing that work that was begun with the ordinance that was adopted in November. And then the second is implementing the neighborhood mixed-use zone, which would be new. The consolidation that's happening in this package is with the downtown zones, the Marymore zones, the mixed-use zones. Those each have consolidation in them. And then with the neighborhood mixed-use zone, there's the identification of 20 parcels for neighborhood mixed-use designation on the zoning map. If the Planning Commission recommends what the technical committee has proposed, then the zoning map would look like what is on your screen. But unlike what's on your screen, you could zoom in and see more detail. And this would be consistent with the land use map that is in the comprehensive plan in Redmond 2050. All right, code updates. There are several components to this. One is affordable housing, and we discussed this at some length at previous meetings. But there are proposed updates to inclusionary zoning requirements that are part of this package for many zones that are part of this package based on increases in height and FAR. I'm sorry, I won't go through all the details, but this table is here as a resource. These are the, this again is a resource, but this is a slide that shows how the yield-on-cost changes from the current base to the proposed base regulations. And again, just a reminder that there are also recommendations for ownership housing, and those are different because the financial impacts are different for ownership units versus rental units. There are code updates for the green building program, and they look, this table summarizes them. You'll remember when we were reviewing the Overlake Green Building Program requirements, there was discussion at that time that in the future, which is now, that we'd be looking at, well, what should be the requirements outside of Overlake? And should there also be optional elements? And so M here in the table means mandatory, O means optional. And you can see there's a column for all centers, and you can see that for centers, all of the mandatory elements that were in Overlake are proposed to be applied across all centers. Outside of centers, it's mixed because different development types, there are different green building elements that are applicable to different types of development. So it's not mandatory across the board. What's new here since the Overlake review is the EV-ready parking requirements. And so that is number four on the list. Those were not part of what you reviewed when you reviewed Overlake. That was brought to you at the request of the City Council when they were reviewing the package late in the fall. All right, so the incentives program. So you may recall that you recommended an incentive structure for Overlake that's menu-based and point-based, and in this package, that structure is expanded to other zones in the city. Similar to Overlake, there are some zones with TOD focus areas that have greater priorities and have greater ability for incentives. And all of these are advancing the same Redmond 2050 themes that were advanced earlier in Overlake only. This is just a reminder of the methodology. I think we covered this at the last meeting, but the points are based on how much an amenity costs and how high of a priority it is for the city. So that's where the points come from. The bonuses that can be earned are floor area or height. In centers, applicants must choose at least one item from each category, but that's not the case elsewhere, and that's largely because not as many points are needed elsewhere. And the idea is that in calculating cost points, we opted for using high-cost building typologies just to be a little bit more conservative, so that we could, to improve the chance that this would be used. Now, it is not housed in the proposal in this package. It's, the Overlake incentives are moved out of the Overlake chapter and into a new incentives chapter, and there are some new categories added, inclusive community, arts and culture among them. This is the list of child-friendly incentives, and selecting some of these can earn a child-friendly bonus as well, similar with business support. All right, there are some miscellaneous code updates as well. There is a table proposed to be added to the open space chapter to describe the different kinds of open space and kind of differentiate among them. And then there are miscellaneous updates in several zones, really just to change zone names, because these zone names appear in many chapters. There are, there is information in 2116, which is about how to measure site requirements that also appeared in other chapters, so that information is consolidated into 2116. There's also some allowances made for encroachments to allow for certain green building construction methods, which was definitely of interest to the City Council. It also exempts food truck courts from minimum density requirements and ensures that there is a one housing unit, one housing unit required in the neighborhood mixed-use zone to ensure that it is mixed-use and not purely commercial. There is the addition of, or updates to, let's see, eight or nine definitions related to work happening in these chapters, and that's the recap. And we can return to any of these slides throughout the evening.
Shall we save our discussion until after a public comment? Okay, so we will start at this point with the verbal portion of the public hearing.
Hi, we have two speakers signed up for the requirements and incentives public hearing. The first is Dr. Morton.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm David Morton, Redmond 98053. I commend the comprehensive approach in the 2025 code package, Part Two, particularly its focus on affordable housing, green building standards, and development incentives. These initiatives are vital as Redmond evolves into a more inclusive and environmentally responsible city. Regarding affordable housing, I support increasing the baseline inclusionary zoning requirements in the Marymore and urban mixed-use zones to 15% of units at 50% area median income or AMI. This change reflects thoughtful planning and economic feasibility modeling. However, the downtown inclusionary zoning requirements are unchanged. As development intensifies, aligning downtown's affordability metrics with those of Marymore and urban mixed-use zones could foster a more balanced, inclusive community. The new maximum building heights in downtown can unlock greater housing capacity and provide incentives for developers committed to public benefits. The green building program is a vital element of this package. Expanding mandatory green standards citywide is a bold and necessary step. Mandating energy benchmarking, minimum embodied carbon reductions, and EV-ready infrastructure will position Redmond as a regional leader in sustainability. Clear timelines for implementation and exploring incentives for developers who exceed these requirements would further strengthen the program. The scope of techniques appears to include water conservation measures and renewable energy integration, such as solar-ready infrastructure, to enhance long-term environmental resilience. As Initiative 2066 challenges electrification mandates, I recommend including flexible language to future-proof these measures, ensuring that Redmond can adapt to state or federal policy shifts. This adaptability will allow the city to maintain its sustainability goals regardless of evolving legislative landscapes. The proposed incentive program, structured around a points-based system, is innovative. Offering bonuses for affordable housing, green building, and cultural enhancements will generate benefits. An updated points calendar could simplify the point system's structure for greater transparency and developer engagement. Lastly, I support the measures to combat business displacement through relocation assistance and affordable commercial leasing incentives. In closing, I appreciate the commission's thoughtful work, and I encourage continued community engagement to refine these policies. The decisions made today will shape Redmond's future for decades. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Katie Kendall.
Good evening, Commissioners. I apologize, I might have a bit of a frog in my throat, so I'll try to get through this. My name is Katie Kendall, and I am here to provide comments on behalf of Winston Investment, who's a property owner in Marymore at the property addressed 6855-176th Avenue Northeast in Marymore. It's really close to the light rail there, proposed light rail. We are providing comments during tonight's public hearing related to the affordable housing regulations. Winston has asked Lo, who is a local developer, to determine how much land is worth under certain scenarios in order to satisfy the financial return expectation needed for financing and development. In other words, when the return remains the same, what happens to the land value? Which is a little bit different than what the city was looking at, because as the landowner, will I be able to get the value that I need, right? I'll email you the specifics, but I wanted to kind of give you the summary. The overall takeaway is, when one compares a project that's being built at a five-story building, which is what is permitted today, and compares that to, and does that at 10% at 50% AMI, and compares that to a five-story building being built under the new code at 15% at 50% AMI, and everything else remains the same, the land value is reduced by approximately $4 million. And the city's spoken about the increase in developable capacity, so we also looked at that and what that could do here. So we looked at an eight-story building versus an eight-story building under both affordability scenarios. And so interestingly, under this simple model, if we assume that a project can build in eight stories and provides 10% of its units affordable at 50% AMI, then the value, land value remains about the same as it does under current zoning with the five-story project, which I actually found kind of interesting. But when you plug in everything being the same, and you just plug in 15% at 50% AMI and an eight-story building, the land value decreases by about $7 million. This is a significant drop in the value of Winston's land as applied to the specific property. So the question is, why is this important? Well, in order to make, for a developer to make a project viable, it has to get a certain yield on cost, which we've talked about, and a key way to do that is to reduce the cost of the land. And the city's talked about this. Sometimes the land has to go down for this to work, right? But from the landowner's perspective, they are not required to sell. And if they see a significant drop in value, the likelihood of them selling goes down as well. And so I would like you to think about it in that perspective as opposed to what the developer can get, because it's also, can anyone buy land? And I want to think about that perspective as well, and we'd ask you, the Planning Commission, to consider keeping the inclusionary requirement in Marymore to 10% at 50% AMI, and looking at the UMU zone too, and keeping that around 10% at 50% AMI. And if the commission doesn't support that change, despite these being the most onerous changes in the city in terms of affordable housing, we ask to look at pioneer provisions similar to what was done in Overlake, to try to help buffer this as we work through the process. And I want to reiterate, we do want housing, we want affordable housing to be built, we just want to make sure it is built. I thank you for your time. I look forward to your discussion, and I will follow up with the specific details that Lo created, because I cannot explain them. I'm just reading the results. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that is it for speakers that have signed up, and the Planning Commission has received some written comments.
Great, thank you. All right, so in that case, I'm going to leave open the verbal and written portions of this public hearing. And we will start our study session on zones and uses in the 2025 code package for Redmond 2050.
Okay, wonderful, and good evening again. There is one issue open on the issues matrix for the zones and uses package, and it is the issue about the base maximum building height being 60 feet or 65 feet. This, the bulk of the response really has been put into the other issues matrix. So if the Planning Commission closes this issue, it is not closing the discussion, but really just kind of, we moved the recommendation and all of that into the other issues matrix since it bears on the incentive program as well. But that's it for this matrix.
So what I'm thinking here is we'll do a round of feedback. My hope would be to just sort of administratively close this one, and, but I don't know if it makes sense to accrue any conclusions that we come to...
On this particular topic?
On this particular topic, to the new, the other.
I would put it in the other one, just that's where more of the discussion is.
Can we have the discussion now, though?
If you'd like, sure.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm going to put up the other issues matrix, though, because that's where more of the content is.
Yeah, so maybe we should just do it in order, then. Does that, I'm just trying to keep our, this is mostly a bookkeeping, like keeping pieces together that go together, question.
So what you might want to do, what you could do, is you could close this issue that's on this, on this matrix, knowing that this topic is actually addressed in the other issues matrix.
Or could we just copy it over to the other matrix? Because it sort of feels like it was just misplaced in the first place.
Yeah, we could copy the same content over, sure.
That'd be lovely, and then we don't need it here. Okay, that sounds good. All right, this was from public comments, so it's not any particular Commissioners item, but let's do a round of comments. Commissioner Aparna.
I actually had emailed about this one, saying that we could close it, but I would like to kind of rethink it from a perspective of balancing the height versus the affordable housing requirements. So I would like to walk my closure back over email, I mean officially, and kind of open it up.
We should still talk about it. I just want to talk about it with the rest of the in...
Yeah, but I had emailed officially, so I just wanted to make sure that I walked that back.
Got it. I think it was sort of a group decision to even...
Yeah, but I didn't want it to be on the record. I wanted to walk my comment back, okay?
Got it. Other comments? Commissioner Van Nyman.
So I just wanted to understand, when staff made the recommendation that they did, to me, it seems like you end up in the same place.
So I think the difference is that the recommendation, and just to state it for the record, is to keep the base maximum height at 60 feet and amend a note that appears below the table where the height limits are listed. That note currently says that, you know, if you've got a really tall ground floor ceiling because it's a mixed-use building, if it's above 16 feet high, for every foot above 16 feet, you can add that foot to the top of the building, so you're not getting essentially penalized for having the taller ground floor. The feedback that we heard is, well, really, the mixed-use floors, a residential floor is 10 feet, and, and the feedback is, above 10 feet, you're starting to be penalized for doing the mixed-use. And so then, what the note would be amended to say is that if your ground floor height in this mixed-use building is greater than 10 feet, for every foot above 10 feet, you can add that foot to the top of the building. The difference between that and changing the base height to 65 feet is that only, it only applies to mixed-use buildings. And so if you have a residential building, a purely residential building, the base height limit is going to be 60 feet, and in 60 feet, you could get six stories. In a mixed-use building... In a mixed-use building, a 60-foot building is not going to be six stories. But if the ground floor height is 16 feet, a 66-foot building would be. So the difference is, it's just kind of more narrowly tailored.
I still have thoughts, I just, that answered my question, we can keep going, or I can come back.
Do you want to actually keep going with your thoughts now?
Well, just that I, I continue to be very concerned about the amount that we are asking for, and that it becomes too onerous at some point, and you don't end up with anything. You're asking for all of the affordable housing, and you're putting the limit on this one thing that they've come back to you and said, hey, can we change this? Because you're like, no, 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 we still want, we still want you to use this incentive package over here, because we have all these other goals. And that's all great, in theory, but it's just not clear how it translates into reality. And at some point, you end up with nothing, potentially, potentially. Because people cannot afford to build, because you've asked for the moon.
So, I just, the counterpoint that I would, because I think that that's a very reasonable fear, I think that's what we're all trying to avoid here. And so, the way that I'm evaluating this, as I'm looking at it, is I'm saying, do the models make sense to me that when, like, we all agree that the climate right now is not ideal for construction, but when it tips, like, where's the line here? Because I think that when developers are doing their jobs, they're doing their job to continue to make the projects more profitable, to be able to squeeze the value out of them. And we want to balance those incentives on their side with the incentives for the community that the community really values. And so, I think that's, what you're getting at is incredibly important, and also, to me, there's a balance here of, are we doing the right thing for the community when these huge projects are being considered? I feel pretty comfortable with this set, but it's, I think it's really for each commissioner to do the reading and look at the results of the models, and try to determine. Because I think you're right on the, you're right on the important issue.
Commissioner Kopley.
From staff's perspective, what's the downside of increasing the five feet for another full floor of residential use?
I think where we wanted to be here is answering the concern. And the concern was really about penalizing, effectively knocking off a story if the ground floor ceiling needed to be taller. So I think on the, on the, on the very narrow issue of, should the base height be 60 feet or 65 feet? I think the recommendation that we came up with satisfies the concern about getting that floor to get the unit count up. So I think it does that. And then, and then there's the much broader kind of discussion of, kind of the appropriate amount of affordability, but I think on the narrow question of 60 or 65, the way we've approached it gets to the concern that was raised to us.
Commissioner Arpana.
So, just to clarify this, this is for the whole city, or is it for, it's specifically for the downtown town center, Marymore Core and Urban Mixed Use, correct?
So this would-
The 65-feet thing is for these specific areas, correct?
Can you list the zones that you said again?
Once, that's, that's what I answered.
If that's what it says, I mean, the note appears below the table in the downtown chapter, and in the Marymore chapter, or, and then the zones that have 60-foot height limits, that's where?
So, in my head, what I'm seeing is the Marymore, and we've heard a public comment today, which I want to acknowledge, is, in the Marymore zone, we already have pretty steep affordable housing requirements. So maybe, and the downtown core does not change in terms of its current affordability, inclusionary zoning. So maybe we split this apart and say, in Marymore, we can allow 65 feet, because they already have very stringent, I'm trying to balance out the affordable housing to, and then look at downtown core, not having it at 60 feet. So, I mean, basically, we don't have the same rule across all three, simply because in some areas, the affordable housing requirements are far more stringent.
Clarify the benefit of that?
So, what I'm looking at is, if you're asking them to build a steeply affordable building, and we want to encourage that steep affordability at 50% AMI, which is where Marymore is coming in to play big time, we would want to encourage that. What that means is, the other barriers should, we could reduce the other barriers to building a little more. But downtown does not change, it's still at 80%. So we can keep that requirement for downtown areas at 60 feet, so they need to incentivize to get to that 65 feet. So I'm trying to balance it based on what the zones are. I don't know if I'm making sense here, anybody else got it? Like, okay.
I understand what you're suggesting. Are there other reactions to that? Yes, thank you.
I just want to emphasize that the, the staff recommendation in the issues matrix, which is that amendment to the note, which would allow that bonus height based on the size of the first floor, that is not related to the incentive package. So everyone, in effect, would get that bonus five feet that they asked for, possibly actually more, right? Because if it's set at 10 feet, then they would get an additional six feet of height. So they would get that extra five feet and that extra floor as a base right if that first floor was above 10 feet, which we would expect to see in mixed use. Just wanted to clarify that.
Commissioner Coleman.
Just talking about downtown, I'm just trying to understand the height limits in downtown versus being in Marymore. Are the height limits higher in downtown than they are elsewhere? In terms of thinking of the kind of wedding cake-type architectural plan approach? To Commissioner Arpana's question, I just want to add that one.
So for the comparison of downtown and Marymore, the wedding cakes do have similar heights. So for Marymore Core and downtown Core, the maximum baseline height is 60 feet. And then for Marymore Edge and downtown Edge, the maximum baseline height is 45 feet.
Commissioner Coleman, go ahead.
Sorry. I'm curious why downtown wouldn't be higher than elsewhere. Is there a reason why downtown couldn't provide more height and therefore more ability to do some of the things we're talking about? Is there a decision made on the fact they had to be the same, or why would downtown not be high, because it's downtown?
That stems from much earlier in the Redmond 2050 process, where we allocated our growth targets. As the sum growth targets go to each jurisdiction, a certain percentage of both housing and a certain percentage of employment must be allocated to centers. And so at the time, we had a few centers to choose from, most of the growth went to Overlake. And through the community priority process, which include things like interactive GISs, all the way to physical maps with Lego pieces, the community preference for the growth allocation resulted in a place where relatively less growth was going to downtown, and there was less need to increase development capacity to accommodate that growth. I will double-check with Jeff that that's a fair assessment.
I mean, I think that's fair, and remember that in both downtown and Marymore, the actual maximum building height with the incentives is 144 feet, and the reason that that's not higher is that it becomes difficult with the groundwater restrictions in both of those places to achieve tower development. And so it is, it does kind of max out with the mass timber 11, 12 stories.
Yeah, I think, thank you. My last comment, last comment, it's just a question, is, when we're talking about five feet, I'm just kind of confused why we're worried so much about what's a pretty small amount of height. Anyway, that's just an observation.
I mean, I think there's, the answer that, the answer that we heard from people who are interested in this is that it's the difference between five stories and six stories, and that can be a lot of housing units, that top floor, and that makes a difference for the performance of the, of the project.
Or on the other side, it can be the amenities that, or like, the uses that are available through mixed use, if it's not purely residential. So it's a trade-off.
Yeah, I get the mixed use versus all residential issues, so, okay, thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Gagne.
I think it's a follow-up to that, I guess, bigger picture, why is there not a consideration of lifting to 65 everywhere? What would be the harm in that?
So, as identified in the issues matrix, it's not necessarily harm, it's more of a trade-off. The implications would be, for mixed use, you go up to 65 feet, and all the floors are relatively accommodated proportionally by the height. But then we'd run into the same issue we were just having with the mixed-use conversation, where 65 feet of residential, pure residential building, would then have like half a floor. And so, with the accommodation that was in the staff recommendation for the amendment to the note, the ultimate effect would be that the pure residential buildings would have a 60-foot baseline max height and get six stories, and then the mixed use would be a 66-foot maximum baseline height and also get six stories. So it provides a little bit of tailoring to whether it's purely residential or mixed use, but the end result would be that the buildings would be between 60 and 66 feet, but each of those types would get their full six stories.
Why is there a foot restriction versus, if the point is that the, whether it's mixed use or residential, that the people who are building it want the full six floors, why is there a chase for the foot and not a restriction on the number of floors?
The, there are many ways that a jurisdiction could define what a floor is, right? Like, a jurisdiction could say a floor has to have 20-feet height, which is not what we're doing for residential stores, but also different, even different mixed-use types have different ceiling preferences. So for example, kind of big-box retail stores have much taller first-floor ceilings than, say, a dentist's office in a mixed-use building. So this way speaks to the, I think the proposed staff no amendment approach provides a little bit of that flexibility while also accommodating community partner preferences. It will help accommodate, when we go by feet, the differences that the actual private developers may have rather than a more prescriptive floor. It also gives us more of a control, or more of a framework for identifying the actual built environment in terms of city, community preferences, right? Like, if you had a floor that was 30 feet, well, a three-story building could be taller than the conventional stories of a six-foot that we're discussing in these hypotheticals.
I would add, measuring height in stories is relatively uncommon in zoning codes. Redmond used it for a number of years, and there have been instances where very unusual manifestations of what a story is have come in the door. And it is, it's very common to use feet, it's very easy, it's very easy for everybody to understand how, how tall is a foot? Well, it's 12 inches. And it is, it's very common across zoning codes, and it just is, and since Redmond was using both in the current code, there are both stories and feet. Using feet is a way of clearly communicating limits, and it also, using feet exclusively simplifies the regulatory framework.
Okay, we'll do another lap around, and then come back to you if there aren't any others, other commissioners on this topic. Commissioner Arpana.
So, just to be clear, because I might have misunderstood, if it is a residential, it is at 60 feet, but if it's a mixed use with a bottom floor other use, it could go up to 66 feet by, based on the code? Is that 66, or is it 65, or, so, or is it 70? Because there could be a 20-feet pedestal retail bottom. So are we capping that at 16 feet?
Is there a cap in the note?
There's not a cap in the note, so the Planning Commission could choose to recommend a cap. It's not always 16. There are two different ground floor height requirements in the code. One is 16 feet, that's for most mixed-use zones. One is 20 feet, that's for the urban mixed-use zone. Expense is going to be a de facto cap, but if the Planning Commission desired to have more certainty around that, then they could recommend a cap.
But it is already covered, like, you wouldn't see things far beyond?
It seems, it just seems unlikely because of cost.
I see.
But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, it would be code-compliant to build it taller, just would be expensive.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Coleman.
So if we went to 20 feet, then the building height would be 70 feet? Is that correct?
That's correct. And that would be what you would see in the urban mixed-use zone, where the ground floor requirement is 20 feet, or proposed to be 20 feet.
One thing that, I'm just going to jump in with a comment. One thing that I did like about this is that it, as recommended, we really talked, I think, three or four meetings back, just about the desire for variety in the heights, and I really like the way that this kind of implicitly addresses, that was a lingering, open question to me, is, are we just building this monotonous sameness, or are we going and pulling a little bit more? And to me, this does a really good job of hopefully addressing that, in addition to some of the other things in the design section that came out of that conversation. Commissioner Arpana.
I think there's also, I'm going to roll back my rollback, so it's all a bit confusing right now, but, because I did not know that that 66-feet thing was allowed. But what I like is that if somebody wants to build a 20-feet bottom story, and they want to go four feet higher, they can use the incentives to top it up, correct? The incentives can increase the height. So, we're not precluding a higher first floor if it's a mixed-use building, but we're precluding it in the event of it being a residential building. And if they really want it, they use incentives table to figure out what extras they want. I think that sounds reasonable.
Great, thank you. Sorry, Commissioner Wood, you're just on mic.
I would agree, it does sound reasonable, so.
You're going to have to bend your mic towards you, it's-
No, I would, I would agree, it does sound reasonable, so I guess the obvious question is, what are we missing?
Commissioner Kopley.
Jeff, on your comment that we could recommend a height limit, I think that we should try not to be too prescriptive, because if we're fortunate enough to get something that's really exciting, like a mixed-use Costco, or what have you, since we've talked about that in the past, we'd want to make sure that we're not putting some arbitrary number in there that is just unfortunately a foot too short for someone to be able to put in what they do. So, I would say, maybe we do a little bit more research to find out what the prudent height limit would be, or just- limit would be, or just say it's got to be a prudent height, without using.
When we ask for more research, are you asking for that to go in the matrix? Or are you?
Is that necessary? Or could we just say that the first floor should be limited to a prudent height for any particular commercial use?
Prudent won't cut it. We would have to have a num, we'd have to, we have to put something there where the applicant and the city staff person would agree on what it means, without having to resort to a lot of gymnastics. So a number would be, would be best.
Commissioner Van Dymen.
I would, I would just say that, remind that people, the, there's been two sets of numbers, the revised numbers in the, in the note here versus the initial numbers that were presented last week in terms of the affordability. Like, you know, it clearly states that the numbers we saw two weeks ago were based on the 65-foot. And I guess I was kind of curious why, when, when those numbers were presented, like, oh, this is the 65-feet numbers, and these were presented to us just straight out, that it, it seemed like that's the way staff was leaning. That, that, that that seemed reasonable to staff, right? That, that, because then there's this rollback that says, oh, but wait a minute, if we don't do that, now here's these other numbers that we've put in a note here, and we are going to make it, the yield on cost goes down. Right?
I didn't see any yield on cost going down.
It did. And then, I don't know if it was this one or the other one, but it went down by one tenth of a percent in the residential model, in the, right? And it was the mixed use where it went down like six tenths of a percent, right? Or more. Oh, there it is. Yeah, so one, or when, yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it goes from 4.1, which we were initially presented with, down to four, and from three down to two, six. Right? So staff is now coming back and saying, kind of based on those numbers, the urban mixed use, we're going to give the flexibility to, but the, those core residential numbers, you know, you're going to have to use incentives to get over that hurdle.
Marymore Core in that model is also mixed use, and so they would get that 65, 66 feet as a baseline, right as well.
Okay, so was it above where we talked about the residential and the, and the fewer units that are, that would be in the baseline model? Right, the number of units that you lose?
Yes, and so that is discussing specifically the unit count above the first floor mixed use.
If you didn't give it to them in the mixed use model.
Correct. The initial financial feasibility that staff presented assumed that the height was sufficient enough to get that amount of floors. And at that previous commission meeting, we were asked to evaluate the impact of dropping it down to a hard 60-foot that would cut off some of those floors, and that is the impact of that analysis.
Okay. Can you go back to where it talks about the number of units? Just so we can all see it.
Is that up or down? Must be down.
Right, so it goes from 122 down to 98 if we don't provide the flexibility. And it goes from 50 down to 25 in the urban mixed use. Okay. Okay, so I see where I was getting confused, because what, what you were saying about the residential is actually not something we've even, we haven't even seen those numbers. There has been no model that said, we're going to give them the residential, the, the sixth floor for residential. We're continuing to talk only about mixed use.
In these models, yes, because these zones will be mixed use.
Okay. Okay, so we're talking about something very theoretical, and we say the idea that we would change it for the residential.
The, a purely residential building would have six stories with 60 feet of height. It would, so it wouldn't need any flexibility. So I guess that's why it hasn't been part of the discussion.
Okay. Okay, I'm good.
Thanks for all the discussion, everyone. Does anyone have additional questions about this for the matrix? Okay, Commissioner Copley.
Just to clarify, in a mixed use zone, can you build only residential?
It depends, I guess is the answer.
Because I think that's where the confusion is stemming from, is if you're allowed to just build residential, then it makes sense to have this conversation. If you're not, then this would be theoretical almost to a fault, because it's not going to happen in a mixed use zone.
The baseline maximum height, whether or not the note amendment occurs, is still 60 feet. So we know that for sure that residential development would be able to get that six, those six stories.
Sorry, Commissioner Gagne.
So you were talking about the community partner preferences, and I think we're clear on what the developers have asked for, and I think we have an understanding of why they're asking for it. My question is, if there are other, if there is community feedback that is not developer-based but is more civilian or citizen-based, and what has that feedback been regarding the height restrictions and any community preferences?
There are people that care. So I can speak to the underlying value, and I'll let Jeff speak to the height itself. The city has conducted a robust amount of engagement throughout the Redmond 2050 process, even going back to 2020 when we conducted our housing needs assessment and subsequent housing action plan. There is a consistent, clear, and firm community support for addressing housing, both increasing housing stability and affordability, stock choices, location of housing, all of the above. And the combination of that community preference with regional and state kind of planning directives emphasizes the need for 50% AMI units. And so we know that, taken holistically, there is support both from what we've heard from our community members and from the council-adopted plans to pursue affordable housing. Now, again, I do want to point out that the, the trade-off here is, because we have the incentive program, it's balancing how much we want to have just that baseline amount of housing versus getting more amenities from the incentive package. So it's a win-win either way, it's just balancing the priorities. Jeff, do you have anything about building height community feedback?
You know, when we explored building height with a community in Redmond 2050 at a policy level, we were looking at different building typologies, you know, podium buildings, towers, mass timber, and those all have kind of a range of heights. So we're getting down to 60 and 65. Those weren't the kinds of questions that we were asking, so I would say we don't have like really granular feedback on this kind of question. We had feedback on building types and the kind of the ranges of heights that those buildings would be. And what we talked about in the downtown and in Marymore is podium buildings and mass timber buildings, that ranged from about six to 12 stories.
I think I'm just going to add in one final opinion of mine. So, and this came up last week, but I just wanted to reiterate it in light of all the discussion this week. I do have a preference for giving the incentive programs a chance to play out. I think those have been very well considered. I really appreciate the community feedback that's gone into creating that, and I want to get more into that exact prioritization in our second study session later, making sure that those are, we're feeling good about that and the incentives that reflect it. But it's just, I really, I think it's hard to do a lot of things at the same time, and so I want to make sure that our incentives program is strong and that we have a clear messaging on what the rules are, so that it's easy to follow. And to me, this seems like a pretty elegant, the current recommendation that was in this matrix for this week seems like a pretty elegant solution to balance a lot of different needs, but prioritize the incentives program and the clear communication. So that, when I read it, I'm just like, okay, good, that's a, that's a good solution here. I really appreciate the conversation here, because I think people are poking on a lot of the details of it, and that's really important. But I'm personally confident with what I'm reading. Commissioner Coleman.
Sorry, I know you said one last comment, so I'm going to ask just one last, this kind of question for you, which was, are you suggesting like for the incentives program, there should be like a sunset time period for it? Like, you know, use it, lose it, get in and get out, or not?
No, that, I mean, I think we're evaluating an incentives program for the code package, that's our work here, not for this particular item, but in this next study session in like five minutes.
Got you.
Then we can actually start just providing feedback on that. But I think that's the place to really make the changes, not necessarily, like, I'm really comfortable on this as a base to build the incentive program on top of.
Got you.
And I picture it in my head.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I think we're going to close this one here. If there's additional, just what I'm hearing from commissioners, if there's additional comments on it, then we'll open them on the incentives and requirements matrix. But so that will close zones and uses for now. Do people want a five-minute break before we go to our second study session? Okay, so we will be back in five minutes. So at this point, we are going to move on to our second study session on incentives and requirements in the 2025 code package for Redmond 2050. And who am I introducing at this point?
Ian and myself are going to tackle this one as well.
So this is Jeff Churchill and Ian Lefkord.
All right, I am going to pull up the issues matrix for this, for this item. Actually, it's the same one that we were just looking at, but I've scrolled to the top. And there are a number of issues that are open from several meetings ago that were informational, so we may go through those with, with some speed. But I know that, Becky, you could be here, I know that her priority, her ask to the commission is feedback on the incentive program. So if we can have a focused discussion there this evening, that would also be wonderful. And we could, maybe we could even do that first, like before going through the issues matrix, if we want to have a round of discussion about like specific feedback on the incentive program.
So just to clarify, so when we talk about the incentives program, because this has been spread at this point over multiple meetings worth of packets, one thing that we haven't gotten a chance to address at all is that beautiful table of priorities, that's the color-coded, enormous one. So we, if people have line-by-line feedback of basically too high, too low, wrong place sort of feedback for that, the amenities listed in that table, this would be a great time to bring that up at this meeting. And then we also have a separate conversation on affordable housing. And then do we have additional incentive issues that we should address tonight?
I believe there are incentive issues. I need to scroll through them to see, to see what they are, but yes.
Okay, so those would be, maybe what we can do, I know the incentives, or sorry, the priorities table has an element, a row in the, oh my goodness, sorry, in the issues matrix. oh my goodness, sorry, in the issues matrix already. So maybe we can do that part when we get to this. And then we'll do a sweep for material that we don't have at the end.
Okay.
Okay, maybe we can start just by going through the issues matrix.
Okay, let's do that. So starting with a, these are general questions at the top of the issues matrix. The first one is from Commissioner Coleman about, you know, what's in chapter 2152? In the.
That's good, in close.
Yep.
Okay. The second issue is about electric vehicle charging from multiple commissioners. And this, the response, there was a, and it was a multi-part question having to do with electric vehicle infrastructure and electric vehicle-ready developments. And there's quite a lot of information provided. And it includes a lot of background that we provided to the city council when they were considering, you know, what kind of requirements or incentives should be established. And our recommendation to them was, you know, let's have the planning commission hold a hearing and discuss this and send you a recommendation to consider. And so that, so the same information that we provided to them is provided to you. It starts here with, you know, what's the policy background? What is it that we're trying to achieve? What do we say that we're trying to achieve in our policy documents? They had asked about, either they had asked, or planning commission had asked about future proofing, and you know, how many new vehicle registrations are electric vehicles nowadays in Redmond and statewide? What does it cost to put in electric vehicle infrastructure of the different kinds in the different types of buildings, whether it's new or whether it is retrofitted? There is discussion of equity and maintenance as well. And then there's a lot of information provided about what other communities are doing. A lot of that comes from the International Code Council. And there is a link to the survey that they did in the issues matrix. You know, and there's a wide range, but these are some of the things that we looked at when we were looking at what, what requirements or incentives would be appropriate in Redmond. And then there, so there was, let's see, pardon me, I need to find it. A few options then presented in the issues matrix that we considered. And the option that staff recommended and put into the proposed code was to have electric vehicle-ready infrastructure in new development. And depending on the type of new development, it'd be a different amount. But for a single family, you know, one electric vehicle-ready stall per dwelling unit. In multifamily, everything should be electric vehicle-ready. In commercial development, 10% of it should be electric vehicle-ready. And then, again, here listed the costs. And the things that we were thinking about were, what are the greenhouse gas reduction and equity outcomes? What are they likely to be? What is the cost going to be upfront? What is the retrofit cost if we don't do this now to a building later? And what, what kinds of cars are people buying now? And will they be buying in the future? And how long are these buildings going to be around? So that's kind of a summary of the discussion here. But the bottom line is that in the draft code, there are requirements for electric vehicle-ready infrastructure, not electric vehicle-charging stations per se. That would be up to the building owners and operators to put into the electric vehicle-ready space.
So I'm one of the people listed on this. So I'll go, but other commissioners, please feel free to jump in. I agree with the recommendation. I think that that's, especially when we consider like how long it takes to actually go through the development process, when new buildings come online, if they don't have this infrastructure, I just, I don't think it would be an appropriate fit for the population that's trying to move in. So I'm ready to close in agreement with the recommendation. Commissioner Coleman.
Yeah, I'd agree with that, 100%.
Commissioner Coopley.
I'd propose moving to the Seattle approach. I think 100% EV-ready for up to six stalls, 20% for seven-plus.
Wait, pardon, could you read those numbers again?
Yeah, there were some approaches listed from other communities. I liked the Seattle approach of 100% for up to six stalls and 20% EV-ready for seven-plus stalls. I think that's appropriate because we've got a very high percentage of people in Redmond that drive these electric vehicles. I think it's 24% versus 11% average. So at least maintaining some amount of those stalls in every building, I think, would be great.
Can you explain the six versus seven-plus distinction that you're seeing there?
100%, so I'm just looking at, on page four at the bottom in the chart there, approaches in other communities. It's showing that Seattle's approach is for the first six stalls, every one of them is EV-ready. After that, seven-plus, it's just one out of every five. I think that, that's 20%. That's about where we sit today at 24% of our riders driving EVs. I think that makes sense.
So when I see that, I mean, that matches the numbers today, but given regulations about transition to EV vehicles, and then just the length of time to develop, I don't think this will meet the need as we're like ticking past 2030 and 2035. I just, I, to me, that doesn't seem like it would be adequate.
You think that's not enough or too much?
I just, I like the proposal as written.
Okay.
Personally.
I'm comfortable with the proposal as written.
Commissioner Wood, or sorry, Vice Chair Wood.
I, I see that you have the, I love the cost, the evaluation matrix. It's certainly very helpful. And I see that you've got outlined new cost construction and retrofit costs. Given the, the maturity, state of maturity of EVs and the continued evolution and maturity of EVs, do you have a sense of what the ongoing infrastructural maintenance and updates that will be required if we have such a large number upfront?
You know, I will ask Jenny Leibach if we have information about kind of expected ongoing maintenance costs.
I ask that question as I'm anticipating this, this adds to the cost burden that we put on developers, which gets in the way of, which potentially gets in the way of what we're trying to achieve with more affordable housing and availability, so.
The thing that I'm concerned about, I agree with that. However, the thing that I'm concerned about is the actual, when you look at the costs to retrofit versus to construct new, it's just, you're really paying, like there's, there's a pretty significant step up to retrofit. And so it, to me, if we know that there will be a need coming into these buildings as they come online, it doesn't seem sensible, it's sort of.
Yeah.
To me, it just doesn't really address the anticipated need to say, okay, we've made most of a building, and then there's going to be extra cost at the end to actually make, make it functional for parking.
Yeah, I asked the question because the piece that's missing is the middle. So the, the new construction cost is, is very favorable. But if the maintenance of that, the infrastructural investments required to keep the EV-ready stalls relevant as we move toward the transition is going to require substantially additional costs. And this is an artificially low number. If there's no impact, there's no.
What additional maintenance costs do you picture?
Well, I mean, so EV-ready requires some kind of infrastructural setup. Is that still going to be, is that going to be obsolete, you know, in the next five, 10 years?
So usually, or just speaking from my.
My own ignorance on.
Yeah, just speaking from my own experience. So that what we're saying is that there would be electrical infrastructure, both in a panel somewhere and in wiring to the actual physical stall. Like with, with luck, that's all it is, and that won't go bad. That's just electrical equipment. But if that isn't there, then you have to possibly increase the size of the line into the building, increase the panel, increase the, like add wiring to the stall.
That's helpful for me, for my understanding, so I.
Totally. And it, it's just what I think we're talking about here is how many of these stalls are even able to receive that.
I'm satisfied.
Great. Other commissioners, or should we close? Commissioner Coopley.
Option one, two, and three are, I think, for multifamily, 100% ready, 10%, oh, I'm sorry, 90% ready, 90% ready. Is there much variance in, you know, option one, two, or three? Like, would one of those preclude a developer from moving forward? Or are they relatively the same thing?
I think in our assessment with, with respect to achieving objectives around, achieving sustainability objectives and equity objectives, options one, two, and three are very similar. Option one has a lower cost because there's not a requirement to install chargers. It's marginally lower. When, you know, when a developer's looking at costs, they're looking at all of the costs in totality. And so a small cost could make a big difference, but we don't know, looking at this table, because we don't have access to all the other costs that the developer has. So it matters, but it's, the relative cost difference are, are in the table. As you can see, kind of how much it matters. So there's some cost difference there just because of the, the need to install actual charging stations in two and three.
Commissioner Coleman, oh, pardon.
I just wanted to say I'm satisfied to close this.
Okay, great. Commissioner Coleman.
Just, just an observation, I mean, I think the 100% ready is probably going to be mute because most developers are likely to put in some stalls because of the nature of having electric cars anyway. Like, you pretty much go to every new building and they have them. It's just saying you have to, you have to have the plumbing to do it, but most of them are going to do it versus actually forcing them by saying, hey, you have to have 10% installed. They're likely to do something. So I suspect that even with 100% ready, you're going to see that maybe the Seattle model that you were talking about, it's just a thought. But we should assume that developers are going to probably put in EV-charging stations in their buildings somewhere, particularly around here.
All right, so we're ready to close? Great.
Yes.
Great.
Okay, the incentives issues start at issue three, and the first one is expansive. It's about prioritization. So exactly the kind of feedback that we're looking for. And I do have that colorful table that I can pull up if that's a resource that commissioners want to see.
So I think the question here on this line, I think bringing up the table is probably a good idea. And what we could maybe do, I think the biggest thing here is if anyone has prepared comments, I want to make sure that we have a chance to see them. Or if people have questions about how they should be evaluating the table to actually give line-by-line feedback, then this would be a great time to do it. It's, I think the major thrust of our conversation here should be, we have all these values ranging from very low. There are three very, or there are three low values, there are three medium values, and then there are three high values. And first of all, is that the right, is that 9.1 the right way of thinking about this? And then, second of all, in terms of the actual values that we're seeing in the table, they're all nicely color-coded for us, are there parts where the values just don't make sense for the zones that they're in? Or that we have quibbles based on community feedback that we've heard or results? We're not necessarily looking to change anything that we did for Redmond 2050. But if things we did in Redmond 2050 feel like they're misapplied in this table, this would be a great time to do it. And if people also, I know it's very small on our screens, if people want to do this over email, that's also appropriate. It's just this week is the time to get that in. Commissioner Parnell.
So I think the Excel sheet is absolutely wonderful. It's also quite detailed. So my vote would be for people to email it in to be able to. So what I'm doing is in column D, which is the, the text itself, I'm, one, I've renamed the file, okay, so that it's got my name on it and it doesn't kind of confuse people. You'd be surprised at the number of people who don't do that. And the column D, I'm highlighting my changes, like I'm just color-coding it so you know that those are my changes. And I'm also indicating which things need to be, likely to be changed according to me. Broadly, this is what I'm seeing. There are some things that I would like to see more of inside the TOD area in the very high-density zones. For instance, just at the top of my head, row 14 and 15, which is affordable, child-friendly housing.
So most of us are still working off the, so we don't necessarily have row numbers. If, but in the Excel, those are listed.
Yeah, yeah. So basically, if, if, just giving an example of how I'm thinking about it, I'm looking at the high-density zones and seeing where there is an opportunity, right? So if I'm looking at affordable units, which are child-friendly, family-friendly, because there's huge value in having it in high-density, high-transit areas because the people who cannot afford housing or have trouble affording housing will also have trouble with transit, cars, all of that. Having quick access to groceries and things like that makes a big difference. And having quick access to buses for their children, for instance, right? So I look at it from a lifestyle thing and where the likely impact is. So that's one part. From the green building program, I am looking at the water piece, both in terms of stormwater management and water conservation. As the higher density places are opportunities for us, we cannot expect, you know, the neighborhood mixed use to do much along those lines.
Do you have requests for specific changes? Do you have requests for specific changes?
Yes, so I will, I will email it because I, I don't think we can get into it line by line.
Got it.
It's a lot.
It is.
But I, if you all don't have the Excel workbook, I believe Becky did share this out.
She did.
Yeah, so I'm finding it very easy to change the coding, but because I don't know what was the original value, I'm making the notes in a column D where I'm saying, this is what I've changed, so people can see it. The problem here in putting all that information together is somebody's got to.
So what I would recommend on this, I think that that's a great working exercise. As commissioners are providing feedback, what I'd love to see is just a list, like a bolded list of this cell or these, this range of cells is currently medium-low and it should be high. Or like, this is too high for this area in these, like in open space, I don't know, outdoor fitness stations, I'm just grabbing one that I'm seeing right in front of me. Like, that should be lower or higher. So if, instead of shipping around massive charts. Because this is a lot of, it's a very densely packed data. If you could just, as people are responding, if they're doing it over email, just send a bolded list of recommended changes.
Right, like list of changes.
But not the file itself.
Not the file itself, got it.
That'd be lovely.
Thank you.
Any other feedback? Commissioner Van Eyman.
I know we've talked about this before, but how, how did we land on medium-low, very-low, kind of low, really-high, super-duper-high as opposed to numbers? Because that intuitively makes more sense to me. Like, this is priority one, this is priority nine. And also, I think, Commissioner Coopley at one point asked, do we really need all of them? Like, like, you know, in glancing at them, you can see there's like three in certain categories.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So I, I'm not sure, we spent a lot of time thinking about what the scale should look like, numerical or, or letters. We can transpose them if that's what's needed. Or, or you, or in the Excel workbook, you can take them all and do find replace so that they're one through nine for you, whatever works for you to give feedback is, is going to be fine. We can work with anything. The number of points on the scale, you know, we didn't know when we started exactly where, exactly what values would be, land in which cells. And so I think that's why. exactly what values would be, land in which cells, and so I think that's why we started with more than maybe ended up in the file itself. They all get converted to numerical values in the zoning code chapter itself. And so, if you want to work from there, instead of working from the letters, you can work from the point values that are in the zoning code chapter itself. What I would, the only danger there is that those point values are a combination of community priorities and costs, whereas the table that, or the workbook that Becky sent out that was on the screen is just the community priorities. And that's what we really want to know from you, is where are these community priorities, do you feel are, doesn't jibe with what's in your mind or what you hear in the community? Because the costs are what the costs are. And that's not what we need feedback on, because that came from the consultant. What we need feedback on is the community priorities.
I guess I'm not clear on what the end product looks like.
So, the end product is chapter 2155. It's been in your packet, and it is a big set of tables with numbers that say, if you do this thing, you get this many points. That's the end product.
Okay, so this sits behind that.
This sits behind that. This is the, how do we figure out how many points should be given? That's based in part on how important it is to the community, and that's the exercise that we're asking the planning commission to think through, is we have given you an assessment of how important we think these are to the community based on what we've heard, through feedback, and that's what I put back up on the screen, is kind of like, for each zone, we said, here's kind of how we got there.
That's helpful.
Commissioner Coleman.
I had a question, sort of an observation, so I think, you know, I do, I do research, which can be dangerous, say you do something and then ask a question about it. What I'm trying to understand is, is this like a sealed unit? So, what I would describe that as is like, mutually-exclusive, completely exhaustive list of combinations, and that you're trying to actually shuffle combinations between these things? Or does it matter if you suddenly had two things that were higher and something that was lower? Like, are we actually moving sort of things around in a table? Or, you know, that are set, you've got 10 of these, 10 of these, 10 of these, a prioritization matrix that we're moving things around within that matrix? Or can we move things in and out of that that maybe create more, more, you know, an H, an M, an ML, like, we can, we can move those around and move them out? So, it's not just a set limit number of mediums, medium-high, medium-low?
You can move them in and out. You can change the total number of very highs, the total number of lows. They don't have to be the same as when we started. The consequence of that will be a change in the total number of points available, right, in the system. It could go up and it could go down. If it goes down, that means that map applicants will need to choose more things to get to the height or FAR that they have desired. If it goes up, that means the planning, we might come back to the planning commission and say, look, if everything's a very high priority, then that's fine, but you, or if, but you might want to take some of these, if most things are very high priority, then you might want to take the things that are lower priority out, just to kind of bring the total points back down, the closer to what it started at. But yeah, you can, it is not closed.
Yeah, just because it, you know, the prioritization pieces often can be like, you press on one thing or something else, then it changes something else, but if everything's a high priority, then nothing's a priority.
I think we're just trying to bucketize things in this, like, like, are these media, like, basically, not necessarily stack rank, like, we're not going from like, 1 to N, we're saying, okay, this group of things, they're all about the same importance.
We are actually, but there's a stack ranking, because you end up with, with a ranking of groupings together. That's still a stack rank in a prioritization matrix. I know what you, I understand. I'm just trying, I was just trying to understand if like, we can change, to your point, we can change some of these, we need to look at that carefully to understand we don't have too many in one thing annoying enough of another.
And I think if, if, if the collective feedback from the planning commission creates a problem in the incentive program, we'll tell you. But you can feel free to pick the priorities that, that you believe are, are correct and should be adopted. We'll come back and say, we'll come back and let the planning commission know if like, if that broke something.
Okay, yeah, that's, thank you for going through, that's helpful.
So, I had a comment just about the 9-point scale, because I was finding that a little bit big. And then I was starting to actually go through and look, there, in the current, in this week's version of the ma, or, matrix table, there aren't any very lows that I could find. So, it only starts at your minimum low, and then it goes up from there. And so, we have like, a medium-low, we have a low, you know, and then we go into our others. So, I would actually propose condensing all of the lows into just low. And then, so not subdividing the low into the 3 parts, and then saying the higher priorities are up from there, just because I personally find 9-point scale, it gets a little fuzzy, just in terms of what we're actually saying. And so, that would, I think, still provide the differentiation of the higher priority things, but not necessarily focus quite so much attention on the things that we don't care as much about. I don't know how other commissioners feel, I'm getting one thumbs up. Commissioner Coleman.
Yeah, if we don't agree with that, we can simplify it in some degree, that would be helpful, probably.
Yeah, because I just, I find a 7-point scale easier than a 9-point scale, it's just when you're trying to actually be a human processing that data.
Yeah, I'd go to 5 myself, but 7's fine, too.
Commissioner Coopley.
Yeah, just to support that, if it's low, we don't need to focus as much on it, is that fair?
I think if it's low, but you think it should be high, that would be an important thing to know. So, I don't think it's necessarily less important if it's marked low, because you might think it's important, someone else might.
Understood. It's just important for us to understand if you think it's low, and we can give you comments on that.
So, I personally, this was my item, I'm ready to close it, but with the request that commissioners please provide feedback for the matrix of changes that you would like to see to priority levels via email this week by Friday?
Friday would be great.
Okay, and then other, and those can be opened as new entries in the matrix, possibly? Or do you want to keep this one open? It's just a very long, we've covered a lot of subtopics in this one.
We could open a new issue, and in that issue, just kind of collect the feedback from the planning commission and report it, is that what you're asking?
That'd be lovely.
And kind of, and, and then together with a revised matrix. And in the revised matrix, you're asking for a 7-point scale.
That was sort of a separate item for me, so I would like to see a 7-point scale where we condense all the lows into just a single low bucket, instead of trying to do the 3-point gradient on the lows.
There are 2 very lows in the matrix, by the way.
Oh, you did find some.
Something in the affordable housing.
Oh, interesting. Which page, oh, sorry, where is that?
In the other, 100% affordable, and then there's a very low on CMU and NMF.
I'm not seeing that in the version that was published.
I see.
As part of the packet.
Okay, then, then I think maybe the Excel file is older, newer, we need to know that as well, right?
Am I on an, maybe I'm on an old version now? Apologies. Oh, you're in the Excel. Not sure. All right, so maybe a republished matrix would be helpful also, although, do people, so that was just a proposal with the 7-point scale instead of the 9-point scale, I don't, I kind of wanted to offer it. I'm seeing nodding.
I am fine with the 9-point, because I think reworking the priorities and reworking the scale seems, when we have to do both, it seems like double work, because they'll have to send that back and then we have to work through the scale. We technically could use that in our heads, but like, in the interest of time, I would say, keep this, but if you want to use a 7-point scale, use it. This is just to reduce staff workload, I think.
So, in that case, perhaps stay with the 9-point scale, but if we could have an updated version of the chart, because it does seem like the part, the chart that was included in the packet, the PDF, and the Excel are not aligned right now.
So, there's at least one very low in the PDF.
Okay.
Version. But I will talk to Becky about that, make sure that they're aligned.
Commissioner Coleman.
I'm confused, I thought there were 7 levels, am I missing? I said there are 9. In terms, are you talking about from very low to very high?
Yes.
7, well, I was just trying to understand. I was wondering where the 9 was coming from, I apologize, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to...
There's, there are 3 lows, there are 3 mediums, and there are 3 highs in present. I was proposing condensing all the lows into a single one, but it sounds like there's still some argument for maintaining that, so I'm dropping that and ready to close this with the request that commissioners email any changes they would like in this chart by Friday.
I was just counting very low to very high, and there's 7 levels, that was all, I was just confused.
Got it. All right, moving on.
Okay. Issue 5 is about what kind of input has the Arts and Culture Commission provided from Commissioner Coleman.
Commissioner Coopley prefer to close?
It was me.
Coleman.
It was me, yeah, that's okay, no, thank you. I read through that.
Oh, sorry, I was still on floor, but that's already closed.
Number 5?
Apologies.
You're right, number 6, Jeff.
Sorry?
I'm sorry, I'm last, you can probably...
I was on number 5. I may have been the only one on number 5. Number 5 about the Arts and Culture Commission.
Yeah, that one's closed.
Number 6 is about business displacement and shell build-out.
And I brought that one up, too. I'd read through this, and I must admit, I was still a bit confused at the end of it.
Do you have a clarifying question?
I guess part of it for me is, is, is the mix of what we need to have in terms of wording versus specificity of typologies, of types of kind of businesses. And I know that maybe that's, that's just me, we can, we can close it, I'm just, disappointed is not the right word, I just think of some of these aspects, it's like, there are certain, certain businesses, and I named a couple, but there's others, there's others, there's others in Redmond that I think we should look at more closely than just having them as part of a, an overarching sort of description. A little bit like, let me put it like this, it's a little bit like having buildings that we're trying to keep for historical purposes. There's certain businesses in Redmond that people would look to and go, oh, that's a business I would like to keep. That's what I'm trying to get at.
So, we...
Designation.
That makes a lot of sense. We talked about this extensively last fall, I think, because there was, or actually, in the summer before, because there was a business that was forced to leave Redmond that provoked a lot of discussion when they left, and it's, I think the conversation at that point was really clarifying, because it's just the role of the city and the role of zoning in preserving businesses, and like, where the limits are in that. And so, I, it's really difficult, because the businesses are really what bring things to life a lot of times, so it does feel like protecting it should be useful, but that's not necessarily a reason. Like, it's sort of a separate issue than the zoning conversation here, even though there, you can feel the impacts of it.
No, I understand, I think it's, I totally appreciate that, and we can't do much about it through this kind of process. There just should be something else that lies on top of this, that, you know, I think the, the city should be able to look at in, in terms of businesses that are central to what makes Redmond Redmond, or other aspects like that. So, we can close this, I just wanted to make the point, and I didn't know we talked about it previously, so I'll, I should go back and have a look at that, too.
It's, I mean, it's why we have things move in rotation, because it's, I just, I appreciated this answer, because I think it really, the zoning code plus the programmatic approach kind of boils down what we talked about in the past, that it's, there are limits to what you can do in zoning, but having more options, if, did you see, when you're saying more, do you, were you talking programmatically, or were you talking zoning-wise?
I'll give you an example, which is more tangible example, which is, the first time I came to America, it felt like every, every, every town I went through was the same place, because it had the same, the same companies on the, you know, all the stuff that you would expect to see, and frankly, in some places, like, literally all these banners you drive down, things you wouldn't see in, in a lot of other countries, and you don't actually see in other parts of the States, but it's just my initial kind of jarring experience, like, this town is the same as that town. And I worry that this is one aspect of how Redmond will, will not be, not be Redmond, it will just be any A-town, a commuter town for people to commute into Seattle, and they live in Redmond, versus, I live in Redmond because I want to be there, because there's things here that actually make it, and some of that are businesses and people that actually run those businesses and their families. You know, I come from a place where there's businesses that go back hundreds of years in the same family, and so I'm probably reacting to it from that aspect. But I do think it's, it's important, and I don't think you can do it from a, you know, from, from this process, but I don't quite know where we, where we do that, sorry, I'm going to diatribe here, but that, that to me is kind of an important aspect of what we're trying to do, and trying to make the city feel like it is something that has a difference, and it's not just like any town USA.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, I think where that, I think the thing on this, the thing on this list, the item on the list in the, in the response that really most directly hits on that is this idea of district development, as of cultivating places and the businesses in those places, and the image and brand of those places, so that they're recognized and that they're seen as destinations that people want to come to, that are, are unique, and that has a lot to do, of course, with the businesses that are, that are in them, right? So, I think that is one place where that gets addressed. I, I agree with you and with the chair that the zoning isn't the place that we can address that very well, except insofar as this incentive program describes sort of the characteristics of the businesses that we want to keep around in the, in the anti-displacement section, because we can't, you know, name individual businesses, obviously. But I think with district development, you can do a lot more at the, at the business level to, to cultivate those unique places in the community.
Commissioner Coleman. Well, no, this is actually your item, so I'm going to let you.
Thank you, yeah, yeah. I know Commissioner Coopley wants to say something before, I was going to say we can close this, but I don't know if you want to make a comment before, my main...
I think we're, if he wants to make an additional one later, then we'll do that, but I, I don't, I kind of want to let the person who owned it decide if they're satisfied with the answer, and then we can move forward.
Yeah, yeah.
On the matrix.
I am, what Jeff just said, I think is, I mean, the details in here go as far as we can with zoning, so that's absolutely fair, so we can close it, thank you. Thank you for the discussion.
Right, issue 7, response forthcoming, so let's keep that open.
Okay, sounds good.
Issue 10 is about how many points should be required to achieve the maximum additional height employer area through the incentive program? And that response is also forthcoming, because there was a request for additional information about kind of the impacts of... about kind of the impacts of making changes to what's in the proposed incentive program.
So I think we've already addressed parts of this. So the portion where we were deciding if we wanted to remove the lower priority options, we've already discussed at our prior meeting, and the decision was that those were still valid, just starting points at a level that was commensurate with how important they are in the priority matrix. And then I'm not sure what additional portion is outstanding.
I think the question that commissioners were asking, if I understand correctly, is what the impacts would be if, so if you maybe recall that in Overlake, the analysis showed that 400 points would be required to get the maximum height in FAR. And it's different in these zones, because they're different building types and you're starting at a different base height, so, but 400. But the commission decided that at least for a while, that that would be discounted to kind of jumpstart the use of the incentive program and to really try to get to some of these building typologies that haven't been built. And so that begs the question, well, is a similar approach warranted for these zones? And if it was, what would the impact be? Because the impact would be in terms of the amenities built, right? Because if, if it's discounted by a certain amount, then certain things won't, certain things won't get chosen, because they won't be needed to be chosen in order to get to all the additional height in FAR. In these zones, I think what we described in, in one of the prior meetings is that the, the leap to mass timber is not the same as the leap to a steel and concrete tower. And so the need to discount is not as great, because the financial feasibility isn't as far off. So that's one thing you might think about in deciding whether or not discounting for a period of time is, is worthwhile, or the amount of discount that you might want to offer. But I think what we haven't answered for you yet is kind of, what's the impact? The impact, of course, depends on how much the discount is, and so maybe the way, a way to answer this would be to give you a couple of options and kind of quantify and describe the impact for, for different options that you could consider.
Great. Thank you for summarizing. So we'll come back to this in January.
I think it'll be good, because we can come back to it with revised priorities based on the input we received from you.
That'll be excellent.
Okay, that's the end of the incentive-related issues. The next set's green building. And the first one was opened a while ago about kind of, you know, what did we hear from community members about green building requirements? And so we tried to summarize that for you here.
Yeah, that was me. We can close that, and that's, I was just curious. So thanks.
You're welcome. And then, let's go to the next one, is issue 11.5, the Green Building Program in Light of Initiative 2066, and it's kind of, you know, what do we do now?
I believe I emailed my response to this one. I understand why 11.5 was done, but I do want to kind of mention that Appendix 10 still has mentions, has references to complete electrification. So I do want to kind of follow up on that and say that can we have, since we have EV readiness, can we also have electrification readiness added into the matrix? So it will be, I want 11.5 to be open and add that as a follow-up question. I know that it's a little bit tricky ground, given 2066, but can we even look at future proofing it without mandating actual electrification?
So just to clarify, are you asking for dual systems? So both gas and?
Yes.
Electric, so the choices would either be electrification or gas and electrification?
You cannot, you cannot mandate electrification as the law stands right now. Because of 2066, it's gone to the courts. So where we land is, we have aspirations and policies with state decarbonization. Now, we cannot mandate 100% electrification, which was originally here in Appendix 10. Because of 2066, that was removed. So what I want to do instead is suggest electrification readiness, which is where you have a panel which is designed for, you know, the things that are running on gas right now, there is a panel which is designed to accommodate electrification in the future, as opposed to not. It's just an exploration. I know there's a little bit of legal stickiness involved in this, but it would be nice to get a response on the issue matrix. Not to electrify, no, because gas will still be provided. We cannot ban gas. So it's.
This sounds incredibly costly to me. Like, I'm just, I'm curious.
So I would like to.
I'm curious your rationale. Like, do you have reasons to think that that's actually viable?
So if, if we retrofit buildings for electrification, it's going to be a whole lot expensive. So where we are paused right now, what my understanding is, is that there are legal challenges to 2066, because there are several state laws, including the Clean Energy Transformation Act, which puts hundred, like, which removes gas from our systems entirely. It's further down. So 2066 took a near-term go and pushed it further out. But it's going to get progressively more expensive to retrofit for electrification. So for developers, sure, it could be. I don't know. But from a perspective of anybody who's owning a building, like owning and, because the laws will come and then they will mandate electrification at that point. If, if CETA continues to stand, then it will come, not now, but later. And the way I am looking at it is, if we cannot do it this way, I would like to have maybe close this later and have another issue matrix item, which says that we add incentive points, we increase incentive points for 100% electrification, which is 20 right now to 40, and put 20 points on the table for electrification readiness. So my first, because we had, we had mandated electrification, we can't do that anymore. I'm trying to find a way to keep the aspirational piece going. So it's either going to be mandated as readiness, or it should be in the incentive, it should pop up in the incentive table. So that's my question. I know it's two parts. Maybe it's two different items, I don't know, but I, I want to make a case for this, because our policies talk about decarbonization so much. All, Redmond 2050 talks about it a lot.
I agree with the goals. I think for the purpose of this conversation, focusing or making it one of your requests for a change in priority or incentive makes a lot of sense to me.
But I would like to explore the idea, like, if, if it is not possible, it is not possible, right? But I would like to explore the idea that we keep something as mandated, but if it is not, because we moved from 100 to zero right now. I'm like looking at a 5%, 10% kind of compromise deal.
May I ask a clarification question for staff? Once this goes through, when is the next time the code would be reviewed or reopened?
The incentive program? Or, no, we're talking about the green building program at this point?
Specifically, the green building program, if the state law situation changes.
Well, I think, you know, it's really hard to say what's, A, what's going to happen with 2066, and, and B, on what timeline and with what impacts. I think that's, that's a hard question to answer. I think the answer is, when we have clarity on 2066, we may, we may desire or may be required to come back and amend the green building program, because it's very unclear right now. We are trying to be compliant as best we can. I think it is, I, I think that Jenny Leibek probably has thoughts. She's probably thought about this, and so it wouldn't be a huge lift to just put those thoughts on paper, just kind of be like, is this idea, that, you know, does it stick to the wall or not, you know? I don't know how much further than that we can go right now, but I think we could, we probably could know if it, if the idea sticks against the wall, to use a silly metaphor.
Commissioner Pardon?
I also had a follow-up. If, if it is going to be not in the green building program itself, but in Appendix 10, from what I understand, Appendix 10 does not require a zoning.
That's right, yeah.
Thing. So we could technically tuck away that stuff there, right?
Appendix 10 will be, you know, once it's adopted, well, it, it has been adopted, it can be amended administratively, like all other appendices to the zoning code. So that actually simplifies things. And I didn't even realize Jenny Leibek was with us.
Amazing.
Jeff, I know your answer was right on 2066. Yeah, we, we have to wait until kind of the lawsuit settles and that kind of thing to see where the law stands, because we have a lot of questions as to kind of the implications for a lot of our programming. But Commissioner Pardon, I did want to ask you one question. When you talk about readiness or electrification readiness, are you thinking purely like electrical capacity? So like the panel and the service that comes to, to a building? Or are you thinking more comprehensively, like, you know, plugs for commercial cooking and things like that? Can, can you kind of elaborate a bit on the scope you're hoping for that electrification readiness point?
So I, I think we, if I had to go with a model, I would go with a model of the state code, which talked about mostly electrification, except for cooking, so for heating in our area, and high-intensity uses like hospitals and restaurants were exempt from complete electrification. So I would take my cues from the, the building code, which was just struck down, as a way to see how far we could go. So mostly it would be capacity, but there would be certain exemptions. Does that make sense, Jenny?
Yes, yep, that, that does. Yeah, thanks for that clarification. Yeah, we'll, we'll talk with our legal staff and get some thoughts and feedback about how we might be able to address your comment in, in the interim. So appreciate the feedback.
Thank you. I, I'm guessing we keep 11.5 open and close 11.6, please. It's, it's a good explanation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next set of issues is about the neighborhood mixed-use zone, and those were all closed. The next set is about open space amendments, and about where that, where the information, what information should be in the table.
And my biggest concern for this was just that, so I think that there's a potential gap here on after a building is constructed, using, like, making use of this amenity to provide this new open space for programming and whatnot, like for the community. I, I'm still seeing a gap in the handoff to someone who would be in charge of the programming for it, because sometimes that would be the Redmond Parks Department, sometimes that would be a private third-party vendor, it might be the property owner. But just a little bit more clarity on like where, so if they're getting, if they're using these incentive programs by saying, we created this amenity, but then no one actually gets to use it, because it hasn't been, like, integrated into a program that tracks it and schedules it and advertises it to the community, then the community's not really getting the benefit. And so just, because I, I don't know if we're expecting this would ultimately be in the Parks Department's purview, but it sounded like not, when we were talking about this from the policy side. So now that we're actually in the code, I want to make sure that this is landing somewhere where we're actually, as a city, keeping track of all these spaces.
Right. And without, I'm sorry, without bringing the, the table up on this, on the screen, but you'll remember that certain types of open space are operated by the Parks Department. It's like, the classic example would be like a public park. But other things that are open space are not, like the publicly accessible enhanced amenity spaces, right? Those would be operated by private developers. And so what I, what I hear you asking is, how do we know that those spaces, especially the ones that are not operated by the Parks Department, will have ongoing, ongoing programming as, as is intended, especially if it's in the incentive program? So I think one thing that we have talked about putting in the code, and I don't think it's in the current draft, but is an authorization, and this relates to this item, but many others, for the code administrator to develop basically a more fleshed-out guidelines, because these are, these are entries in the table, right? And so there have been questions, but well, how exactly would this work? And so it would be, it would be the code administrator's job, which is, you know, basically staff, to say, all right, here's what all of this means, and to publish that, so that that would be clearer. The other place where this could come into play is in, in conditions of approval. So if a project is using an incentive, then there's going to be a condition of approval in the entitlement that says, well, you use this incentive, so as a condition of approval, this is what you need to do. And so it's, that's, that's the documentation that says, this is how this incentive is going to operate. What that doesn't ensure by itself, because it's just paper, is that it's someone's job to make sure that that's happening, right? And most, most conditions of approval are enforced on a complaint. You know, most of them aren't like public amenity spaces, right? But, but in general are enforced through complaint-based code enforcement. And so that is, that, that's the typical way, something that would, would be enforced in a, in an entitlement condition of approval. I think with this incentive program and looking at new kinds of incentives that we haven't seen before, I think it's a good question of whether that's really the, a model that would be effective or if something else is needed. And so I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I think we're trying to find that balance of getting that handed off without trying to get into operations in the development regulations, because really the development regulations are supposed to be kind of what are the requirements of getting this thing built. But with the incentive program containing items that have operational aspects to them, it makes it difficult to draw clean lines.
Yeah, I think that's what I was trying to get at with this question. That was a great answer. The step that I still want to see here is being much more clear of, if you're providing this amenity space, this open space, is it possible for the city to run programming there? Is it possible for third parties to run programming there? Is it possible for only the developers? So sort of like, who could run the activities in that space? Just embedding that into the definition of the incentive. And then later, there will have to be some programmatic work done by the city, probably, if they choose to actually run programs out of that space, but I want it to be in the code that they're allowed to. Or to be perfectly clear, that that's not part of this incentive at all.
Okay, so I guess a clarifying question, that makes sense. The clarifying question I have is, the definitions of these spaces are not in the incentive chapter, they're in the open space chapter. So what I think, what I think you're asking is for the definition that's in the open space chapter to include information about who could operate activities in that type of open space?
Well, so this came up in the POPs stuff, where it's the publicly accessible.
Right.
I don't have that in my mind, right?
And yes.
Yes. So I believe it actually is related to the incentives.
Well, it is, in that those types of spaces are incentivized. The definition for those types of spaces that is being proposed, or the description, rather, is in the open space chapter, because they are both incentivized, but in, but they also exist outside of the incentive program. So they don't exist only in the incentive program. So. So it doesn't, it's not in that chapter. But I just wanted to make sure that you're asking that where is defined, which in this case is in 20136, the open space chapter, that it, there it is. There it describes allowable program operators, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, that would be my preference. I just, I think the definition of the space should include, because it's not clear cut, like if Redmond owns a building or if Redmond is renting a building. This is something where it's a little bit more flexible, so being very precise on who's allowed to run the programming or advertise it, I think is important to defining that new space type.
Okay, I, I can, it may be, I can think of instances where in the incentive program because it's a, uh, that there might be more control that the city has over who could operate programs in a space than if it's not part of the incentive program, it's just an entitlement. So I don't, so I have questions about how we'll address it, but I understand what you're asking for.
Okay, thank you so much. So we'll leave this open for now. Commissioner Aparna.
I just wanted to piggyback on that and just add one little thing that, is there a time proposed? Like we had the affordable housing has a timeframe as to how long something has to be affordable. So how long has something to be this public amenity? I don't know if that's addressed, but what if two years later, somebody just kind of does something else there, you know? You've got the incentive, you've done the thing, and then it morphs. So I don't know if there's something we want to have in it, but it's, I was piggybacking on your question.
That's probably a new line.
It's a new issue, like a new.
I think it's a new separate issue is, because that's a really good point and it's different. Just like, is there, basically, do these sunset? Do these end?
Right.
Or do they have to keep the space that way?
Unless it not just be the open spaces, then any public amenity that is offered, is it, is it time, like, is it sunset? It's a nice way to put it, so, yeah.
Can they rip out that playground and raise the consequence, or lock the bathroom or whatever it is? Yep.
Okay, got that one too. And we'll add that. Okay, the next set is affordable housing. Issue 16 is about the affordability parameters for downtown.
We can close this. This is good information and makes an interesting case. It's different, but I really liked it. Thank you.
Um, issue 17 is the one that we discussed earlier in the evening, and we decided to, remind me, what did we decide to do? Did we decide to keep this open? Or did we finish that discussion?
I believe we finished this discussion.
Okay. All right, issue 18 is about parking, parking for units that are affordable.
Yeah, this has trade offs to me, but, um, I appreciated the answer and I'm ready to close.
And that is the end of the issues matrix.
Hold on just a second. Thank you for working through that. At this point, are you ready for new?
Yep.
Additions? Commissioner Aparna.
So I've sent two, three more via email. I'm not going to belabor those, that point, but if, if, could we please add the potential addition of pioneer provisions as we saw in the public comment today for the Mary, I believe it was a Marymore, one of the Marymore zones. It would be nice to see, given the deep affordability requirements, to give it a kickstart like we are doing in Overlake. We have used pioneer provisions in Overlake. So it would be nice to see if that's feasible at all in where we are requiring deeper affordability.
Can you be more specific, what kind of pioneer provisions you're envisioning?
The first X units would get, could build at a certain percentage, very similar to the Overlake formula. I would like to see consistency in the formula applied, but the first X number of units, but it's going to scale down because Overlake had, I think, what, 800 units or where have we landed? I don't remember. But Overlake had the first 800 units to be built could be built at 70% AMI. Then after that, it just went down to that 50% mark straight off, something like that.
So I kind of disagree with that proposal, just because the motivation for doing the pioneer provision in Overlake was because we were really hoping to get people past the financing issues. And I don't see there being a comparable, um, problem in Marymore for the types of buildings that are being built and for the location. Because there are already existing.
So in my head, in my head, it's worth exploring. It may not be something we go for. It might be something we vote on together, but I, I would like to acknowledge the public comment and think that it's worth at least an exploration.
But what are you trying to incent with the pioneer provision?
By doing that, we are making sure that Mary, because the affordability at Marymore is 50% and 15% or 20%, whatever the numbers are, which is pretty deep at 50%. If we want that to happen, we, we pioneer either not by changing that 50% mark, but maybe reducing the number of units for the first X units. It's a way to ensure that we get that deep affordability. But this is my opinion, I mean, you know, I'm, I would love to hear, if the commission doesn't agree, that's fine.
Commissioner Coleman.
Sort of principle, I was going back to the comment about them trying to get to 10% at 10%, 50%, I think is the, was the comment from the, that he was here, is that right? Katie Kendall? The pioneering thing, I think we should explore it because once you get somebody moving, you get other people, hopefully. So I, I do think there's some, something, there's something there. I was mentioning like, you know, some of this, something similar earlier, like, so, but I don't quite know what the sunset would be and whether it would be based on the first X number of units and you would shutter at a certain time. I have no idea about those details, but it does, it does seem like, it seems reasonable to at least explore it.
Commissioner Coopley.
This is my biggest concern of the evening is this issue. I think that the, in essence, 50% higher requirements for affordable housing in the Marymore district going from 10 to 15%. It's considerable enough that if I'm a developer, I might just choose to build in that other area, all other things being equal. And I would be very concerned if an area that's supposed to be our arts and cultural district and is supposed to be one of the areas most welcoming to diverse communities gets the least amount of affordable housing because the yield on cost there doesn't pencil. Just so everyone knows, the 10-year treasury today is at 4.5%. If a yield on cost doesn't beat the 10-year treasury, there is zero chance that anyone's going to put capital at risk when they can just park it with the treasury at 4.5. So I think that we should do what we can do to incentivize people to take a chance on an area that's even less developed than some of the others. Marymore is probably the least developed of our core areas, and I'd love to see it turn into what the city has and staff have envisioned. So I do support the idea of the pioneering effect, giving maybe the first 500 or 1,000 units maybe a, a discount to some of those inclusionary requirements.
Commissioner Gagne.
I agree with Commissioner Aparna that we should add this to the matrix. I think we had a community feedback from one of the developers who, I think at the end, sort of laid down the gauntlet that you're suggesting, that there is a possibility that if we don't explore some of those pioneering options, that the side effect could be nothing, build nothing. So I think it's deeply important to include that in there.
Do people want to wait for that until we get the model that she used in email that she said she was going to send? Or do you want to open it now?
I think it would be good to see the city, the staff's analysis of this. I am not saying we should do the pioneering provision. I am saying we should explore it. So with, when we get their response, it would be their numbers. I'd like to see the counter from staff if that is a possibility. Then we have a discussion. But right now, I don't know. It could be a really stupid idea right now, right? I mean, it doesn't pencil in from the city's perspective at all. That's fine, but we don't know that yet.
Um, but usually we don't open something until we have, like, we don't, um, open something if we don't know what we're asking staff to compare against?
I'm, I'm asking staff to please explore the idea of a pioneering provision, which is scaled down to Marymore, but is, keeps the affordability, deep affordability intact, but maybe reduce the units and for the first X units. I don't know how many units are coming up in Marymore. So if it may not, like, just having that, oh, we are expecting 1,000 units in Marymore, and out of that 100 would be, I mean, 150 would be 50%, but for the first 25 or, I don't know how that works out, but if there's some math, it would be nice to see, that's all.
So I think we, we know how to do that. That's simple enough. I think we don't, I'm also confident that we'll get the model from the person who provided a public comment soon because she knows how to reach us. And what I don't know is whether we'll be able to provide any kind of reaction to that because we don't know kind of how, there's just, we don't know until we get it. So I don't think we could promise that we could provide any of our analysis of that work to you, but we can certainly put together pioneer provisions and give you an assessment of like, how effective we think they would be.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. I'm not asking for an analysis of their, their, it's, it's for us, like, what I'm seeing is we don't have a counter from, they're saying pioneer. I want to see a counter if it's, if it doesn't match, it doesn't match, right? But.
But we don't really know what we're countering too, because we don't have that info yet.
Right, but what is doable from the city's perspective is what I'm asking, because we did discuss this in great detail when it came down to Overlake and we did have.
Relative to not being able to have any comps for financing. So to me, it's an apples, it's not an apples to apples.
Yeah, but for us as data, we are seeing both sides. It's perspectives. It's not like, I'm not comparing their numbers to city numbers, but I would like to see it just to see, hey, is this something we can do? If we can't, it doesn't pencil, that's fine, from the city's perspective, not from the developer's perspective. I'm looking at it from, will the city lose a lot more units or will it actually kickstart something? That's, that's my understanding. Does that make sense? I don't see anybody agreeing, so I don't know.
Commissioner Coleman.
I was just, again, just as we've done in the past, exploring like what's situation of the cities that have done something like this? Like what's the knock on effect, the, the sort of the, the flywheel effect of providing a deeper incentive in the first place? And does that encourage, you know, a first mover and then other movers or not in, in sort of similar circumstances?
I don't know if anyone wants to respond to that in the moment or if we're just adding that to the matrix.
At a high level, it does make initial development more attractive, but depending on the scope of any given development, it's possible that one development takes up the entire step down process, in which case, you know, it's not quite as attractive for others.
Commissioner Van Nijmegen.
I, I would just want to explore it. I mean, the, the reality is that, you know, we keep talking about how things aren't penciling yet, but if the incentive, or if, if a, if a pioneer provision makes it, brings that in closer, that's, you're one step closer to all of the housing associated with that, not just the affordable housing, but all of the supply. Right, you want to do everything, even, even if the city is leaving some of their chips on the table by putting the pioneer provision in, like you're still, you still have those in theory, we haven't, you know, nothing's finalized yet, but you would still have those affordability requirements down the line. So you're only giving up, the city isn't giving up all of their position. They're just trying to bridge the gap in the meantime with the building situation the way it is with interest rates and such.
Commissioner Coopley.
Yeah, to Commissioner Van Nijmegen's point, and to your point, if someone were to take up all of those incentivized units, but then the Fed goes and cuts rates two more times next year, it's very possible that those units could then get back filled in because they pencil next year. So I think it's really just getting that initial development started, getting people moved into those units, getting affordable units in the area and just starting the, the process, getting the snowball rolling that I think is important here. And I also just want to very much encourage staff to continue using these yield on cost comparisons. I think they're great and I thought it was fantastic that you guys put those together. So thanks for that work.
Any additional things to add to the matrix at this point? All right, I think we are going to end the study session for now on incentives and requirements, but just a reminder to please get any feedback that you have about that prioritization table in by Friday. And so to queue us up for January. One more from Commissioner Aparna.
So just, just clarification, is it end of day Friday? Like from a work perspective, just trying to understand, can I get it by 5:00 PM Friday or is it like 9:00 AM Friday?
It's like Friday-ish.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Not Wednesday next week.
Is that actually, it's a serious question, is that over the weekend as well? Just checking, like if you send.
Would people be willing to receive things still over the weekend on this? Probably.
Well, I guess here's the, the reality is that there are vacations planned between now and the next planning commission meeting, so there is essentially Monday to do the work. And so even if you do provide it to us by Friday or over the weekend, it's possible that we won't turn around and update the matrix by the next meeting just because the staff availability will be very low.
That seems very reasonable. So maybe commissioners can work to get in by Friday-ish, plus or minus a day, but just with the assumption that the later it comes in, the less likely it is to be addressed at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Good?
Yes.
Great. All right, so with that, we are going to move on to the Redmond 2050 monthly update with Jeff Churchill.
All right. What I want to share with you this evening is an opportunity and a schedule for design standard updates that you have been waiting very patiently for, that are kind of the last part of this 2025 code update. On February 4th, we will host a community workshop here and online at 1 o'clock. The registration link will be on the redmond.gov/rebmond2050 page if it's not already. So if you would like to attend, please go ahead and register and that way we'll know if too many of you have registered and then we'll contact you to let you know. But if that's something you're interested in, please feel free. And then those materials will come to you starting in your, at your second February meeting with a public hearing in March and continued study sessions in April until you are ready to make a recommendation to the city council. City council review would begin immediately thereafter so that these can get adopted in June. And we're, and we're working on deadline here because some of this is for House Bill 1293 compliance, which had to do with design standards. And the deadline to be fully compliant with 1293 is June 30th, 2025. So we are looking forward to bringing that to you and we hope if you're interested, you will sign up and show up on February 4th. And that is, that has already begun to be advertised in the community. Also in here was a link that was also sent to you by email of the, to the video that we tried to show last time, that did not work, but please watch it, it's a wonderful video featuring community members who participated in Redmond 2050. That's all I have.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, at this point, staff and commissioner updates.
Hi, everybody. Just a reminder that in your agenda and also online, there's a 2025 meeting schedule, uh, really no surprises, meetings continue to be the second and fourth, uh, Wednesday of every month, except for November and December, which will be the first and third. One thing to note was that, um, on April 16th was the annual, um, workshop for a planning commission, but we got some feedback that that date is not very ideal due to school vacation, so just wanted to, uh, at least for now, ping that, uh, for commissioners, uh, to consider other possible dates. Um, I think we had somewhat talked about possibly April 30th, which is the fifth Wednesday, but again, we're not really suggesting that, we're just throwing some ideas out, and we don't have to make a decision at this time. And also just the extended agenda, which kind of is the upcoming topics, has been updated till March. Of course, some, that sometimes is subject to change, but if you just want a general sense of kind of the meetings coming up in the next three months, that's also on the planning commission pages. And I believe that's all I have. And also to note, um, planning commission liaison role is quarterly, so, uh, it'll be shifted to Ian, um, come January, so he'll be your main point of contact, but of course, you can always reach out to me, and, um, Jeff, and Becky, and all other, um, long-range planning staff, so, that's all I have. Happy holidays, and Jeff, if you have anything additional?
Thank you for the work on the liaison role. We always appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, any commissioner updates? No. Okay, in that case, I look for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All right, then we are adjourned.